Good evening and welcome to the December 9th, 2024 Legislative Session of the Salisbury City Council. In the event of an emergency, please remain calm and exit through the double doors you came in. Make a right. Proceed to the stairwell. If the hallway is blocked, then exit to the left, around the corner, and down the stairs. Please do not use the elevator and let us know if you need any assistance. If you wish to speak during the public comment period of the meeting, please complete a form near the table by the door in which you entered in and give it to the city clerk. At this time, please hold those forms until the end of the meeting during the public comment portion, and those will be read in order of receipt. Speakers will have four minutes. Please silence your cell phones, and in this time, please stand if you wish for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
At this time, we'll invite Reverend Dr. Bruce Glisten from Allen Memorial Baptist Church.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight, and we just praise you and we thank you for creating everything in this world and for creating us. And Father, as we come together tonight as a body gathered here, we pray for your wisdom and direction on every decision that is made here, that you will direct and guide for everything. Father, we ask that you be with our council members and our mayor. Lord, give them wisdom. Give them your wisdom, Lord, and your direction in everything they do, that it will bring glory and honor to you. Father, we thank you and we praise you for our city, and we pray that you will keep our city safe. Father, that you will remove all violence and acts of violence, and, Lord, that you will protect every person, help them to make decisions that are glorifying to you in everything. We give you all praise and glory and honor, that we can be here together tonight, and we ask you to direct every step. So in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
On tonight's legislative agenda, we have the consent agenda, which will include the August 19th work session minutes along with the special legislative minutes. We have an award of bid, RFP A-25104, On Call Civic Utilities, and ordinances numbers 2901, 2902, 2903, 2904, 2905, and 2906. At this time, I will entertain a motion and a second to approve the legislative agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
In the chair votes aye. I will entertain a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. English?
Good evening, Council. We have two items on the consent agenda this evening, two sets of minutes, meeting minutes. We have August the 19th, 2024 work session minutes and also special legislative session minutes for approval.
All those in favor of the consent agenda as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
In the chair votes aye. Thank you, Ms. English. This time, we'll invite procurement director Jennifer Miller to the podium.
The Department of Procurement seeks award of bid approval from the Salisbury City Council for the solicitation we'll talk about this evening. The city followed requiring bidding practices as defined by the Salisbury Charter and the Municipal Code of Ordinances and publicly posted this solicitation on the city of Salisbury's procurement portal, Planet Bids, and the state of Maryland's website, eMaryland Marketplace Advantage. So this is for RFP A-25-104. It's On Call Civil Utilities. It's a citywide contract typically used by the Department of Waterworks, Department of Infrastructure and Development, even Department of Field Operations might utilize this contract. This is for on-call civil utility work to assist the city with the construction, repair, and inspection of city utilities and various pipe work. The solicitation was posted August 16th of 2024, and two proposals were opened on September 19th, 2024. We received two proposals, first from Red Lack &amp; Sons and another from TK Construction. Proposals were evaluated according to the evaluative criteria in the solicitation document. I do have the scoring there in your packet. We would like to award both vendors because this is an IDIQ or indefinite delivery, indefinite quantity contract meant for task orders under $100,000. So no purchase order is issued at the onset of this contract. A contract is issued, and then task orders will be sent out as necessary. We spend approximately, over the last three years, the city has spent about $500,000 for this type of work. And so the general ledger account that's charged would vary by department.
Ms. Miller, just one question from me. I do see in the notes that, of course, this is for indefinite delivery, and then the renewal clause is for up to two one-year terms.
Yeah.
Will you need to come to council for any additional terms?
No.
Okay.
Nope, we just renew it. And it's on mutual agreement with the vendor, assuming they want to renew it, assuming we want to renew it, and at that time, we talk about pricing as well.
Right. Council, any other questions or comments from Ms. Miller?
No.
Okay. And I will entertain a motion and a second to approve the award of bids as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
In the chair votes aye. Thank you, Ms. Miller.
All right, thank you.
Yes. At this time, we'll pivot to Ms. Beauchesne for our ordinances. I will entertain a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 2901 for second reading.
So moved.
Second. Good evening, everyone. Ordinance number 2901, this is an ordinance of the city of Salisbury authorizing the reallocation of federal recovery funds from the water sewer fund to the general fund and to appropriate said funds for the service center share two and three in the general fund. As you mentioned, this is before you for second reading. There have been no changes or amendments since first reading.
Thank you, Ms. Beauchesne. All those in favor, ordinance number 2901, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
In the chair votes aye. I will entertain a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 2902 for second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance number 2902, this is an ordinance of the city of Salisbury to accept funds received from the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development for the purchase and installation of cameras on the parking garage. Again, also before you for second reading, no changes or amendments.
All those in favor, ordinance number 2902, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I will entertain a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 2903 for first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance number 2903, this is an ordinance permit, an ordinance of the city of Salisbury to authorize the operation of a utility substation on a property located on the southerly side of Callaway Street, MAP 0104, grid 0012, parcel 2594, block B, lat 1, and the R5A residential zoning district as required by Section 17.160.040B of the Salisbury Municipal Code. Whereas the city of Salisbury has received a request in accordance with the provisions of Section 17.160.040B of Title 17, zoning of the Salisbury Municipal Code, to operate a utility substation on a property located on the southerly side of Callaway Street, MAP 0104, grid 0012, parcel 2594, block B, lat 2, and the R5A residential zoning district. And whereas mayor and council may grant an ordinance permit for certain uses as specifically listed in Title 17, zoning of the code, particularly Section 17.010, sorry, 17.160.040B and City Council, Section 17.12.080D. And whereas the Salisbury Planning Commission held a public hearing on November 21st, 2024, reviewed all information and gave a favorable recommendation to mayor and council on the request to establish the utility substation operated by Eastern Shore Natural Gas. And whereas City Council has determined that based upon a review of all testimony and evidence presented, and the request should be granted pursuant to Section 17.160.040B of Title 17, zoning of the code. Section 1 of ordinance 2903 reads that an ordinance permit authorizing the operation of a utility substation on a property located on the southerly side of Callaway Street, MAP 0104, grid 0012, parcel 2594, block B, lat 2, is hereby granted to Eastern Shore Natural Gas Company. And Section 2, Eastern Shore Natural Gas shall ensure compliance with all applicable state and local laws. City Council reserves the right to conduct periodic review of the operation of the utility substation in order to ensure compliance with such laws, and City Council reserves the right to revoke this ordinance permit upon a finding of noncompliance.
All those in favor of ordinance number 2903, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing none opposed, the chair votes aye. I will entertain a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 2904 for first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance number 2904, this is also an ordinance permit, an ordinance of the city of Salisbury to authorize the operation of a daycare center at 224 Philip Morris Drive and the Light Business and Institutional District by the Nightwatch Childcare Center LLC as required by Section 17.28.040B of the Salisbury Municipal Code. Whereas the city of Salisbury has received a request in accordance with the provisions of Section 1728.040B of Title 17, zoning of the code, to operate a daycare center in an existing commercial building located at 224 Philip Morris Drive and the Light Business and Institutional Zoning District. And whereas mayor and council may grant an ordinance permit for certain uses as specifically listed in Title 17, zoning of the code, particularly Section 17.28.040B. And whereas the Salisbury Planning Commission held a public hearing on September 19th, 2024, reviewed all information and gave a favorable recommendation to mayor and council, with all commission members voting aye or in favor to request the establishment of a daycare center. And whereas City Council has determined that based upon a review of all materials presented, the request should be granted pursuant to Section 1728.040B of Title 17, zoning of the code. Section 1 of ordinance 2904 reads that an ordinance permit to authorize the operation of a daycare center being hereby is granted to the Nightwatch Childcare Center LLC for property located at 224 Philip Morris Drive in Salisbury. And Section 2, the Nightwatch Childcare Center LLC shall ensure compliance with all applicable state and local laws, and that City Council reserves the right to conduct periodic review of the operation of the daycare center in order to ensure compliance with such laws, and also reserves the right to revoke this ordinance permit upon a finding of noncompliance.
All those in favor, ordinance number 2904, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing none opposed, the chair votes aye. At this time, I will entertain a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 2905 for first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance number 2905, this is an ordinance of the city of Salisbury amending Title 12 of the Salisbury City Code entitled Streets, Sidewalks, and Public Places by eliminating Sections 12.04.010, 12.04.020, and 12.24.020, and adding new chapter 12.25 to include all litter violations under one chapter entitled Littering, and further amending Title 1 of the Salisbury City Code to confirm the penalties imposed for municipal infractions and misdemeanors. Whereas the ongoing application, administration, and enforcement of the city code demonstrates a need for its periodic review, evaluation, and amendment to comply with present community standards and values and to promote the public safety, health, and welfare of the citizens of the city. Whereas council of the city is authorized by Maryland Code Local Government Article Section 5-202 to adopt such ordinances not contrary to the Constitution of Maryland, public general law, or public local law, as council deems necessary to assure the good government of the municipality, to preserve peace, and order to secure persons and property from damage and destruction, and to protect the health, comfort, and convenience of the citizens of the city. Whereas council of the city may amend the city code pursuant to the authority granted in SC 2-15 of the charter. And whereas Section SC 5-138 of the Salisbury Charter provides, the city shall have the power to create enforcement ordinances such as misdemeanors and municipal infractions, and that a violation thereof shall not exceed a fine of $1,000. Whereas Maryland Code Annotated Local Government Article, Sections 6-101 and 6-102 caps fines for municipal infractions and misdemeanors at $1,000. Whereas Sections 116.020 and 116.021 of the Salisbury Code caps fines for municipal infractions and misdemeanors at $500, and shall be revised consistent with the charter and state law. Whereas littering is a public nuisance, it creates potential health and safety hazards, and it creates unsanitary and unsightly conditions within the city. Whereas littering has occurred in the tributaries of the Waukamaka River in the city and has caused significant dangers to public safety as a restriction of stormwater contributed to the flooding that led to US 13 being closed, which impacted the ability of the fire department and the police to provide timely emergency response to the north side of the city. Whereas placing all litter violations under one chapter with its own set of penalties provides clarity and consistency throughout the city code. And whereas mayor and council find that the health, safety, and general welfare of the citizens of the city will be furthered by amendments to Title 1 and 12 of the code. And whereas mayor and council have determined that amendments to Title 1 and 12 of the code shall be adopted as set forth herein. Section 1 of ordinance 2905, you are amending Title 1 of the Salisbury City Code by eliminating language that's marked strike-through and adding the bolded and underlying language. And so I will highlight for council the changes. I will direct your attention to lines 47 through 49. It is amendments to Chapter 1.16.020, governing declaration of an infraction or civil zoning violation, violations and penalties. The changes there are merely increasing the current fine from 500 to 1,000, consistent with state law. Moving to lines 57 and 58, which are changes to Section 1.16.021, governing misdemeanors, violations, and penalties, once again, increasing the fine from $500 to $1,000. Section 2 of this ordinance, Title 12 of the city code, is hereby amended by eliminating the language that's struck through and adding the bolded language. So in essence, striking chapters 12.04.010, 12.04.020, and adding a new chapter, 12.25, entitled Littering, and I will read those new amendments or proposed amendments. Section 12.25.010, prohibition of littering on streets and sidewalks. An individual who disposes of, casts, throws, or sweeps trash, refuge, leaves, or debris onto the streets, public alleys, or sidewalks within the city limits shall be guilty of a municipal infraction and shall be subject to a fine not to exceed $1,000 per violation. Each day the violation continues shall constitute a separate violation, subject to an additional citation and fine. Section 12.25.020, this is prohibition of littering from vehicles. An individual who allows or causes any garbage, refuge materials, including liquids or other foul or unsanitary substances, to be released, spilled, or discharged from a vehicle onto any public street or right-of-way within the city, shall be guilty of municipal infraction and shall be subject to a fine not to exceed $1,000 per violation. Each day the violation continues shall constitute a separate violation, subject to an additional citation and fine. And finally, adding Section 12.25.030, which is prohibition of littering in the Waukamaka River. An individual or entity who throws, deposits, or places any materials, refuge, or substances into the Waukamaka River or tributaries within the city limits that may harm navigation, restrict stormwater flow, or negatively impact public health, shall be guilty of a municipal infraction and shall be subject to a fine not to exceed $1,000 per violation. Each day the violation continues shall constitute a separate violation, subject to an additional citation and fine.
Thank you. All those in favor, ordinance number 2905, please signify by saying aye.
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 In the hearing none opposed, the chair votes aye. I will entertain a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 2906 for first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance number 2906, this is an ordinance of the city of Salisbury to amend Sections 15.04.010, 15.04.020, 15.04.030, and 15.04.040 of the chapter 15.04 of the Salisbury City Code, which is the building code, and to add Sections 15.04.025 and 15.04.035 to chapter 15.04 in order to update and amend the city's standard building codes. Whereas the ongoing application, administration, and enforcement of Title 15 buildings and constructions of the city code demonstrates a need for its periodic review, evaluation, and amendment. And whereas mayor and council may amend Chapter 15.04 Building Code pursuant to the authority granted in SC 2-15 of the charter and Section 12-501, and as follows, of the public safety article of the Maryland Annotated Code and related co-mor regulations. And whereas mayor and council have requested that the Department of Infrastructure and Development periodically review Title 15 in light of existing building trends and practices and code updates. And whereas the Department of Infrastructure and Development recommends approval of the proposed code changes. Ordinance 29.09 would amend Title 15 of the code by adding bolded and underlying language and deleting the language that is stricken as part of your agenda packet, and I will call that to your attention. Section 15.04.010, adoption of standard codes. There is the changing of reference from the International Building Code 2018 referred to as the IBC to the Maryland Building Professional Standard Regulations. And then adding a new subsection H, adding international solar energy provisions, which is referred to as the ISEP, and all changes updating the year of reference from 2018 to now 2021. Section 2, which is amending Chapter 15.04.020 of the code, this is governing amendments to the International Building Code. Again, here we are updating the year from 2018 to 2021 and adding as incorporated in the Maryland Building Profession, excuse me, incorporated in the Maryland Building Performance There's another change on line 41, striking the word delete and adding amend. Also, consistent with updating our reference to the Board of Appeals found on line 42 and line 48, again, changing the year from 2018 to 2021. Now directing your attentions to lines 76 and 77, adding a new subsection 8, which reads, I, which reads, "Chapter 1, amend A1105 Inspection Request. Add: The permit holder or their authorization agent shall be present for all required inspections." And Section 3, we are amending Chapter 15.04 of the Building Code. That is subsection 15.04.025, amendments to the International Residential Code. The following additions and deletions are made to the International Residential Code 2021 as incorporated in the Maryland Building Performance Standards. A, Chapter 1, amend A102.7 Existing Structures. Illegal occupancy of any structure existing on the date of the adoption of this code shall be permitted to continue without change except as otherwise specifically provided for in this code, the International Existing Building Code, City of Salisbury Property Maintenance Code, or the NFPA Life Safety Code 101, year 2021. B, Chapter 1, delete 105.2 Work Exempt From Permit. 2, Fences Not Over 7 Feet, tie and replace with the following. 105.2 Work Exempt From Permit. 2, Fences Less Than 50 Linear Feet. Section C, Chapter 1, add to 105.2 Work Exempt From Permit 11. To read as follows, replacement windows, doors, providing the rough opening framing is not altered. Exception, all newly created sleeping rooms or existing sleeping rooms where window rough opening framing is altered shall require at least one code-compliant emergency egress rescue opening, referred to as EERO. Chapter 1, add 105.2 Work Exempt From Permit 12. To read as follows, minor aluminum siding and custom trim provided no structural ailments are compromised or need to be replaced. E, Chapter 1, amend 105.2 Work Exempt From Permit 1. Other than storm shelters, one-story detached accessory structures provided that the floor area does not exceed 120 square feet. F, Chapter 1, amend 105.2 Work Exempt From Permit 10. Decks not exceeding 120 square feet in area that are not more than 30 inches above grade at any point are not attached to a dwelling and do not serve the exit door required by Section R311.4. G, Chapter 1, amend 108.6 Work Commencing Before Issuance of a Permit. Any person who commences any work on a building structure, electrical, gas, mechanical, or plumbing system before obtaining the necessary permits may be subject to a permit fee two times the amount of the original fee. Chapter 1, this is in subsection H, amend 109.3 Inspection Request. Add: The permit holder or their authorized agent shall be present for all required inspections. Moving forward to Chapter 4, which is going to amend Section 15.04.030, which governs amendments to the International Plumbing Code, changing from year 2018 to 2021. And directing your attention to line 115, which is where the additions are starting. Chapter 1, delete A106.1 Where Required in Its Entirety and Replace With the Following. Any master plumber who desires to construct, enlarge, alter, repair, move, demolish, or erect, install, enlarge, alter, repair, remove, convert, or replace any plumbing system, the installation of which is regulated by this code, or to cause any such work to be performed, shall first make an application to the Department of Infrastructure and Development. No work regulated by this chapter shall be commenced without a special permit issued by the Department of Infrastructure and Development approved by the plumbing inspector or building official. License and permits, or in the case of septic installers, shall be issued by the Waukamaka County Health Department. Only a master plumber shall be eligible to apply for permits authorized by this chapter. B, Chapter 1, amend A112.2 Which Is Required Inspection and Testing. Add: The permit holder or their authorized agent shall be present for all required inspections. Almost done. Section 15, we are now amending Chapter 15.04.035, which governs amendments to the International Fuel Gas Code, year 2021. The following additions and deletions are made to the International Fuel Gas Code 2021. A, Chapter 1, delete A106.1 Where Required in Its Entirety and Replace With the Following. Any master plumber or master natural gas fitter who desires to erect, install, enlarge, alter, repair, remove, convert, or replace an installation required by this code or to cause such work to be performed, shall first make an application to the Department of Infrastructure and Development. No work regulated by this chapter shall be commenced without a special permit issued by the Department of Infrastructure and Development approved by the plumbing inspector or building official. Only a master plumber, master natural gas fitter, or a site utility contractor shall be eligible to apply for permits authorized by this chapter. And B, Chapter 1, amend A112.2 Required Inspections and Testing. Add: The permit holder or their authorized agent shall be present for all required inspections. And finally, Section 16, or Section 6, which is Section 15.04.040 of the city code entitled Reference Standards, and there we are updating the years from 2018 to 2021. And the one exception to that, which would be on line 58, number nine, the natural gas code is changing from 2014 to 2017.
Thank you, Ms. Beauchesne. All those in favor of ordinance number 2906, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing none opposed, the chair votes aye. Ms. Beauchesne, we appreciate you today.
I try to keep up the tempo.
Thank you. Moving forward to the public comment portion of the meeting, I'm going to take a moment to subside or to go and welcome. We have a few gentlemen from YMCA's mentoring program led by Mr. Kevin Lindsay, so we welcome you all. Glad we had such an exciting meeting for you today, but thank you all for joining us here. I know the mayor just visited and spoke with them, and I did last year, so we thank you all for joining today.
Yeah, I wanted to mention that the government's not this boring typically, just so you know. So don't be dissuaded to come and help serve some day.
There are a lot of words, though. Yes, all right, so we'll pivot to public comments. Again, each person will have four minutes. First, we'll call Carol Zimmerman up to the podium. Ms. English will distribute those after the meeting, okay? Yep.
No, she can distribute now if you'd like. Actually, that would be.
My name is Carol Zimmerman. I live at 511 Edgewater Drive in Salisbury. And if she would, there is something I'd like to point out in the packets that I'm going to discuss, so if she could distribute, that would be great.
I know, but Ms. Zimmerman, normally we have the materials distributed afterwards. I don't want to.
All right, well, then I'll do a little show and tell. I'm with the Spring Chase neighborhood, and I'd like to introduce Mary Hooper, who is on the board of the Spring Chase HOA. And we come before you today with a petition signed by about 80% of our owners and residents. You represent 100 households in the Spring Chase neighborhood, and about 150 residents. Chase neighborhood, and about 150 residents. Over the course of the last many years, the improvements to the streets of Spring Chase have been placed into your CIP and then removed, they've now gotten to a point where the deterioration is so bad that it's no longer just an aesthetic issue, it's a real safety issue. And the reason why I was going to share some of the photos with you is that I'm particularly fond of this one, and I'm not sure you can all see it from there, but this represents a very significant crack filled with weeds along Edgewater, which happens to be where I live, and where I happen to walk and walk the whole neighborhood. And I moved in in May and took a little walk at the end of May, caught my toe in that and fell. Luckily, I wasn't injured, but you know, there's a whole lot of people in that neighborhood who are senior citizens and who like to walk for exercise. So it's a very serious issue. There are pictures in there, every single street in that neighborhood is filled with wide cracks, filled with weeds, numerous cracks, uneven pavement, and discolored pavement. In addition, we've been asking for replacement of the really antiquated streetlights, and there are pictures of those in the packets as well. Those lights are not only energy suck, suck the energy, but they're not energy efficient, they glare into homes, they don't focus on the streets, so therefore, for both cars and for pedestrians, it's a real safety hazard. So this isn't the first time you've heard from us, or even the second time, but more like the third, probably the fourth time. I'm not sure, since I'm new to the neighborhood, why it's been included in your CIP and then removed a couple of times, but this is no longer, this is now a time where this has come to a pretty serious situation. And we were asked a couple things, that you would set a meeting where you would actually approve, put this back into the CIP, or however it is that you can get this fixed within a year's period of time, that you have someone could take a look at those lights and look at some that are LED and energy efficient lights for that area, and that a reminder that we pay the same amount of taxes as everybody else in the rest of the city, and yet there are CIP improvements that have gone forward, and ours have been pulled out time and time again because of lesser priority. So, we're here to tell you that it's a very high priority for us, we have signatures of quite a few folks and voters, and we hope that we would ask for you, not obviously tonight you can't make a decision on this, but that you let us know when we can expect to have this on the next agenda. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Zimmerman, for your time, and we did receive you all's petition last week, thank you. And we'll review the photos in time.
Thank you.
Yes. Next, we have Robert Taylor.
Good evening, Salisbury resident, Robert Taylor. A few things, I didn't come here to speak to this, but listening to the thing about the trash in the streets and raking leaves, frankly, I think to penalize people for raking out into the street is counterproductive, you want to get rid of the leaves. At least where I live, we get a lot of leaves off the city park trees, and for many years, when the street sweeper comes by, I rake them up, sometimes from the center of the street to give him a pile about yay wide so he can get it and doesn't have to make multiple passes on the street. On the opposite side of the street from my house, the city put in a big concrete barrier for the bike lanes, it's about yay wide, one side's concrete, the other side's concrete, street sweeper can't get in there. It gets clogged with leaves about this time of year, I sweep them out for them, keep it clear, otherwise he couldn't get in there. The city doesn't rake the leaves out, they don't come by and do it. Same thing for the park, on the edge of the park, I'll rake them out for them. I don't think there should be a penalty for that, you want to encourage that, to get rid of the leaves. So please think about that on that ordinance that you just passed, because I think that there's change needed there. Storm warning on the state budget, last year, the deficit, structural deficit for Maryland was 1.2 billion, this year, it's projected to be 2.7 billion. That's going to mean, most likely, if we don't have tax increases, quite a bit of budget cutting. How much that's going to affect the city, I don't know. It's certainly going to affect it to some extent, we'll have to wait and see on that. The legislature's Spending Affordability Committee, does their final session on the 17th of this month, that's when they put out their report to go through the budget, that's what they expect for the budget to be, and just bear in mind, even though the governor proposes the budget, the General Assembly disposes of the budget, they pass it, so they can cut that back, and so that's going to have to be watched. The other thing, I just want to real quickly, because I might not be able to do it later, is just express my disappointment on the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation on the density increase. I attended both meetings in October and November, I've never seen anything that was obviously so scripted and done without any discussion by the group after they heard all of the evidence. One of the members wanted to discuss it further and come back later, Mr. DeShiel wouldn't have that, he said, "Now, we've got to do it now," and he reads already findings of fact that were already written without any discussion by the group. I've never seen that, that's called a kangaroo court in most places, and I think that that is really a sad situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other public comments in person or virtually, we'll move forward to administration comments and updates, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I hope everyone enjoyed the tree lighting and the parade that occurred on Sunday, which was really good, well attended, I thought, anybody saw. Want to thank you guys for coming out, and again, remind you that government is never this boring, and I don't want to discourage you from being involved. To the chase, the streets issue, you know, one of the things we've, when I came on, the, based on my estimation, the annual CIP for street, should be about a million five, and that had gotten as low as 500. Last year, we moved it up to 700, this year, we're trying to move it up to 900. We'd like to get it and restore it back to its original levels, because I think you're right, we not only have the gap, but we also have the backlog that has created out of all of this. So, there's a couple other things we can do to bridge the gap for now, which we can approach to, we're also talking to other neighborhoods about the same thing, where your streets haven't reached the critical level, maybe they have in your minds, but from the perspective of the city's, you know, normal maintenance replacement schedule, we can maybe split the difference and get you where you want to be while at the same time not breaking the bank as we try and retrain our budget for your purpose. So, that, including your lighting, I would love to have a meeting with you guys and figure out a plan going forward, so thank you, and Merry Christmas, everybody.
Thank you, Mayor, and I know I asked Mr. Kitzrow to provide a brief update, but if you, I don't want to put you on the spot with the footbridge, I know we had a lot of comments on it, if you want to wait till Mr. Kitzro's back.
No, we had talked about it, and I had pulled, already pulled, for many that don't know, the little footbridge that goes between the amphitheater and the main street, Market Street, had been deteriorating over three years, again, another example, it's like, so last year, we put $125,000 aside in the budget that we haven't spent yet, so we've gotten a, we've gotten the evaluation by the structural engineer, we're going to start going down that path of figuring out how and when we can get this done, so that's that.
Thank you, Mayor, for that, for that, I know, I know some people, some people in the public were a little concerned about that, and I saw them put that up, because I park in Lot 16, and just, maybe we should have our field ops, I saw some people trying to jump over the plywood, so we don't want to, if we want to get that plywood just a few feet taller, I wouldn't be jumping over that, but there were some brave folks when I was walking out of work today, so we'll get them out of there. I'll move forward to some council comments, if we have any here.
I do.
Okay, Councilwoman Jackson.
First of all, a nice group, we welcome you, a nice group of young men, and you sat there. I mean, did Kevin threaten you all?
No.
Because you were, I mean, and usually, young people don't sit still as long as you have, and you've been very nice and polite, and we really appreciate that, and do come back, come back and visit us. I also would like to state that it's been maybe two, two months, two and a half months that I brought up hiring and the termination of diverse employees. I haven't really heard anything except for numbers, I would love to have that conversation, and I can wait until after the Christmas holiday to have that conversation, but I think that conversation needs to be had. I would love to see the percentages of our hiring of our diverse community go up, that 17% is not good for me, and I know it's not good for the city, it's not a good look for the city. I would like to see a hiring, a firing of diversity go down, and we need to figure out a plan to make this work for our city, because we are a very diverse city, and it really breaks my heart to see that we don't have that diversity included in our city government and our city jobs. So that's something that we need to have a collective conversation about, and let's work on it, because it's disappointing to me, very disappointing to me, and I want to see how we can incentivize hiring more diversity, because you have to have an incentive, you have to. We just don't, and our diverse community just does not apply for jobs for nothing. They see something, and I see it myself. There's something wrong here, and we need to correct it. Also, this Saturday, I will be hosting my eighth annual Senior Citizens Dinner and Gift Giveaway. I've had to shut the list off, I have over 200, that's not including the helpers, so I'm looking to have a grand time, and it's Saturday from 12 to 5 at the Billie Jean Jackson Park, the Richard Hazel Youth Center, and if any of you young men over here would like to come out and help serve, you're more than welcome, if you don't have anything else to do, we'd love to see you work with the seniors.
You can suck in, it's up now.
Mr. Lindsey, but thank you all for coming, thank you all for making your statements, your facts, and just being supportive of your own communities, you know, we need to hear that, and there's nothing wrong with it, if we don't hear it from you, we can't get everywhere, we can't see everything, so thank you, ma'am, for bringing it to our attention, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other council comments?
I just want to say the parade was fantastic, it was a lot of fun, saw a lot of kids out there, handed out a lot of candy, an absurd amount of candy.
DeSean was giving out one piece.
He was, he was a little Cindy. But you know what, he was the one that had candy before we even got to the end, so like, he still had candy left, I got to say, there was something to be said for that.
After years of organizing and volunteering, I know how and what to do, and I was just grabbing a little, and Councilwoman Jackson reminded me that I wasn't throwing enough, and I felt guilty, I was going back, and, but they didn't have any candy, they, so I was a little conservative to make sure that the candy was lasted throughout.
So there are a lot of other great events for the holidays coming up, but this Thursday, there's downtown, is the Winter Wonderland Drive Thru Event. Now, last year, there were close to, I think, 500 families who were served, and so this Thursday at 5:00 p.m., it's a drive-thru only, you can come out, see Santa, kids will get a gift, it's a really great event, and it serves a lot of folks in the community. The other things are, the zoo is having an event this Saturday at 5:00 p.m., Rockin' Around the Zoo, I highly recommend you check it out, it's a lot of fun, they're doing it this Saturday and the following Saturday, and then, there's a lot of stuff going on in District 4, guys, I'm sorry, there's a, there's a Tea with Santa this Saturday at Poplar Hill Mansion, so that's a lot of fun, too, for kids, you can check out on their Facebook page. So that's it for me, it's been a, been a good, I'm glad to be back.
To have you back, Councilwoman Jackson, yes. Councilwoman DeShiel.
Thank you for coming, appreciate your attendance, we really do, as well as the general public. A couple of things, the parade was fun, even though you were chintzy with your treats.
We are really going to show on tonight.
Oh, my goodness, oh, my gosh, I can take it.
You're never going to live that.
It's all right.
I made sure that they didn't leave you behind.
You did leave me behind, so don't worry about it.
I said, "Oh, she's back," she's the welcome committee, she was speaking, she's so nice, yes.
I found too many five-year-olds I used to teach with. I had the pleasure this morning of attending the memorial, it's a service to honor the wreaths, putting the wreaths on the veterans memorial at the Civic Center. What moved me the most were the number of students that were involved in that whole ceremony, and this Saturday at 9 o'clock at Parson Cemetery on North Division Street, Wreaths Across America, Google it, look it up, history, the reasoning behind wreaths across America is extremely touching, and everyone is welcome to participate in that. I had an Airport Commission meeting today, we are going to have another option for an airline out of Salisbury, it will be announced in the next couple of weeks, it will be strictly for going to Orlando, be twice a week.
I'm on it. I need it, I need it.
The school there that will be, you know, the AV, the maintenance school is opening January 27th, at a maximum enrollment of 25, we don't know exactly what we have so far, but the collaboration between UMES and the county and Piedmont has just been phenomenal and is allowing this to open. If you're wondering, need a Christmas gift, I met with PAC 14 the other day, on January 25th, they are celebrating 25 years, and they have mugs, and it's great for soup or anything else, just contact them, and they are available, red, blue, or gold. Let's see, I think I have one more thing, keep in mind, Hands and Hearts Ending Homelessness for volunteering, for registration, and/or for fixing dinners, it is behind the Seventh Day Adventist Church in their community center, and I have a, one last thing, a request for the mayor and Mr. Kitzro, may we have an update in January, maybe, on Carroll Street?
Hey, we're going to have one, it's going to the final...
You know, I'm not, I'm not letting that drop.
Final stage of design, in terms of the colorized drawing, because we want to announce it as a...
I know, thank you very much, so everyone have a wonderful holiday.
Yes, thank you.
Just have a couple things, I just want to go back to Spring Chase, Andy emailed me earlier today, and is going to have an update by the end of the week about Spring Chase. The complication with some of that is, remember, Edgewater is a city street, while going into Spring Chase, some of those streets are HOA streets, but the Edgewater is all city, so, but anyway, he will have an update by the end of the week, and I will be calling and reaching out to you directly about the lighting, the streets, the whole, the whole project. So thank you for bringing that up again, but I think we're making some headway. I do, I did speak to Ms. Brown, she's the executive director at Anchorage Nursing Home, which was known as Anchorage Nursing Home, earlier today, and there are concerns, and I think they've escalated in regards to some of the recent deaths by the river, but there is no, as we know, there's no fencing, one of the things she pointed out and showed me today is the back part of Anchorage aligns right with the river, and there is a nice walkway out there, and there's residents who do walk, and they often have canes or wheelchairs, and I think there's, the concerns have escalated, especially for the recent deaths along the river. So I really want the city to revisit the fencing along the river, and especially in these high-traffic areas and areas where we know we have residents walking, visiting, exploring, enjoying, we just want to make everything as safe as possible for everybody. And as always, if you are healthy, this is a reminder to donate blood, this Saturday, Shore Progress is hosting a blood drive, that's this, this Saturday, the 14th, and right here on Mount Herman Road at the Blood Bank of Delmarva, you can call 1-888-825-6638. Please, please donate blood. Please, please donate blood and, and save a life. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Council Vice President, and that's, we've been seeing the reports of the, of the persons falling, and it's tricky, I know that the conversation when that was removed about the insurance and the kind of the numbers and statistics, if you travel to any inner harbor, again, that doesn't have fencing along there, so it's a really, you know, it's a tough thing, every time we see it, it's really tough, because, you know, it's, the numbers, but I know we've been having the conversations, I want to, we want to make sure that, you know, we don't, that this doesn't become a habit, so thank you for bringing that up, and I know we'll have those conversations and make sure that we, we go with the safety first for our residents. One, one thing I meant to mention last, last week when we first presented the, the installation of the cameras with the garage, I was actually coming forward from, from the south end of town to the council chambers, and I was, because daylight savings, it's now dark when we come to the, even the 4:30 meeting sometimes, and I was seeing how well-lit the garage was, and I, again, I don't see it that way, that often, that was surprising to me, but I was, I was really happy and excited when I spoke with city, with the police, you know, command staff, that were, that they search for dollars, and they're putting dollars towards the safety and security of, you know, putting these cameras there, and it's extremely well lit, I would have anyone just stand there and look at, that thing is bright, so again, you know, again, I know people feel, you know, not as safe with that garage, but it's, it's very well lit, we're putting, you know, more dollars and funding into, into the security cameras there. I frequent garages a lot and pay a lot of funds to parking garages, and some of them are dim and not designed properly, I don't have too many concerns myself, so I would encourage folks to just drive through during the day and just, you know, become more acclimated with, with the garage here. Again, a reminder for 2025, council is shifting their schedule, meeting on the second and fourth Mondays of the month, we're giving you off, giving you all off on the first and third Mondays, so that Council Vice President can go to Orlando when, when we have the flights coming from Salisbury, but again, all meetings will start at 6 o'clock, again, that's for continuity, and just to give some time, and just to make sure that we are all aligned, second and fourth Mondays at 6 o'clock, I think it'll be better for us moving forward, if need be, meetings, if we need to have a special session, we will post that as soon as we know about it, and we'll in advance, and make sure that you all know about that there. And then, of course, look for information from council, if you want to get creative in 2025, challenge ourselves even more, have some more listening sessions, get out to you all, and get information from, from, from you all, from the public in our districts, so look out for information and meetings and different events coming for, from council for 2025, and I think that is all I have, so if that is all, I would interest in a motion to adjourn the meeting.
To move.
All right, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, see you, guys.